Good morning, everyone. We're just about to get started for the called meeting for the setting of the millage rate for 2020. This morning, there'll be a slight altercation to the called meeting agenda. We are going to allow for public comment to happen right after the chairman calls the meeting to order. So if you want to speak about the millage rate, please make sure you turn in a red public comment card. It will be limited to three minutes per speaker and relative to the millage rate. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to the millage rate for the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday morning, August 25th, 2020, shortly after the 10:00 AM hour. And we are here at 9:03 Main Street in the Rockdale County Auditorium. I'd like to go ahead and call the names of those who have submitted a request to speak regarding the millage rate. And we are still getting some, but that's fine. Chief Morgan is out in the lobby with red cards for those that may want to submit. And in the essence of time, we will begin to call those who've already submitted their names. Commissioners, we're moving forward. And the first name we have up this morning is none other than Mr. Garvin Haynes. Mr. Haynes, come on up.
Good morning, my name's Garvin Haynes.
Good morning.
Morning.
And I oppose the additional increase of almost 5%. I got tax bills of increasing my properties of 30% already this year. Now, how y'all could pull that off? I'm appealing and I'm already getting it back saying that my appeals, I'm going to have to, of course, go to the board and appeal those. But how in the world do y'all think that properties in this county have gone up 30% is just beyond me? And then to ask the taxpayers to put another 5% on top of that? Y'all already have the highest budget in the history of Rockdale County history. Do you have any answer for anything? All I can tell you is this. It won't be forgotten. You did this just after you had an election that you squeaked by. And now you're going to hit us with another 5% increase. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Let me go ahead and perhaps I should have stated this prior to Mr. Haynes coming up. We are here for the Board of Commissioners to make a vote so far. And as of right now, the vote has not happened. We've not made a vote as of yet. This board has not made a decision as of yet. We will be making that decision this morning, and that is the purpose of this hearing. But as of right at this moment, there has not been a vote, there has not been a decision made. But I thought I'd go ahead and say that next up is Mr. Stephen McMullin. Mr. McMullin, come on up, sir.
I talked at the last time and I had asked the board, everyone, good morning, first of all. I had asked the board, please do not vote for this rate increase. And I'm going to say we are in a time right now where people are struggling like never before. We are suffering and we are just asking, some of us are turning the corner now and getting back. If our mortgage companies could go and give us a break with forbearance. If our car companies can say, oh, we allow you not to pay your car. How come where I live at, and one of the reasons I moved to Rockdale County? Because when I looked at Fulton County and when I looked at other counties and the expenses on the taxes, I said, well, this is a town I can at least raise a family. If you want to be equal and act like this is Fulton County, then I could have stayed closer to the city. I love it out here, I love being out here. I don't think that is fair at this point to raise it. I ask that you who have the vote in power to look and understand that this is not the time. If you have some reserves or something that you could do to bypass this, as me as a citizen, I'm asking with everything I got, please do not allow this to increase. People are hurting, people are suffering. Do everything in your power. And like the gentleman before me said, I'm kind of surprised right after the election, this is what I'm hit with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. McMullin, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Ms. Priscilla Farmer. Come on up, Ms. Farmer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just want to know, how do you all calculate the percentage of the taxes? And plus, how do you calculate the value of our homes to increase our taxes? We have senior citizens that live in here in Conyers that have done a fixed income. How they afford to pay the taxes if you increase the taxes? Would they have to put their houses up for sale and move out or go somewhere else or try to find somewhere to go? Or if they don't pay their taxes, their home's going to be foreclosed on or taken from them? This isn't right. This isn't, a lot of homeowners here are on a fixed income. And just like the gentleman said, we are struggling right now through this pandemic. You know, we don't even know what's going to happen from one month to the next and from one until next year. And they're talking about going up on taxes? My taxes doubled and I don't understand why it doubled, you know? Just please don't go up on the taxes. I can't afford these taxes and I don't think anyone else can afford these taxes, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer, thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Robert Reed. Mr. Reed, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me speak. My wife and I have lived in Rockdale 44 years. We've seen a lot of tax increases, a lot of millage rate increases. But past three years have been pretty tough. My taxes increased the year before last a pretty good bit, but last year they increased 100%. They doubled. This year I got another increase. And I questioned them, they said, well, it's based on sales prices, a lot of big houses being built out there. You know, I realize that, but there should be some kind of a factor, a multiplier, whatever, to consider, you know, the age of the house. Because if I sold my house, I'd have to do a lot of remedial work to it to bring it up to standards. And just like the gentleman said before, you know, you see on TV where all the states, cities, counties, whatever, they're asking all their departments to cut back, you know? See if you can reduce manpower, whatever. If you've got new projects coming online, see if you can let some of those projects slide for a year or two. But, you know, we're in a bad, you know, we're in a bad situation right now. And we need all the help we can get and we hope y'all will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you so much, Mr. Reed, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the good citizens here in Rockdale County. I think that is all of the comments regarding the millage rate this morning, Director Rulich. At this time, I'd like to move forward, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, with calling our meeting to order to move forward with the millage rate decision this morning. Wait a minute, I'm getting an indicator from our marshal in the back that we've got another speaker.
Another one, yes, Mr. Chairman.
We've got another speaker that just came in and we certainly want to afford everyone the opportunity, have an opportunity to speak and allow their voice to be heard. So we're going to yield, Commissioners, just for a second here, to give this speaker an opportunity to not only submit the card to Chief Morgan, but to make their way on up to the podium at the same time and we gladly hear from the resident.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Chief Morgan, and good morning, Mr., is it Schultz or Sheets?
Sheets.
Mr. James Sheets, thank you, Mr. Sheets, for coming out this morning.
Yes, sir. I just got here, as you can tell, but I want to thank you guys, everyone, for letting me get an opportunity to speak. Been to a couple of meetings and I don't know what's been said before, but I want to reiterate the same thing. There are people like me on a fixed income. And when I see my taxes go up $300 in one year, then the next year it goes up $1,000, that is something wrong with the system. And I just want to get up here and express my concerns about Rockdale County. I came here with the same, I think I heard the gentleman say he moved here and he loved Rockdale County and how it was, and it was around the average, around by 16 to, you know, the average tax. But when I see my taxes go up $300 one year, then $1,000 the next, which is equivalent to $2,800, I may as well be living downtown Fulton County. This is not how this community has been since when I first got here. We need to, I will ask that if you can look into it to cut the taxes and try to save taxpayers' houses and people who are on fixed incomes, because I'm about to lose this battle right here. And that's it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets, and thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Okay, Commissioners, we're going to move forward here. We're calling this portion of it to order and we will move forward with the millage rate.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so before you this morning is the resolution that would be setting the 2020 millage rate.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
So this morning, I moved to set the millage rate at the rollback rate at 18.01 and to keep the host percentage at 70% for 2020 and to adopt this resolution as presented.
I'm sorry, I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded that there be a rollback of 18.01 and set the host percentage at 70%. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It has been unanimously voted by the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners that there will be a rollback of 18.01 and keeping the host percentage at 70% for 2020 and to adopt this resolution as presented. Let me say to the Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Rockdale County, we've heard you loud and very crystal clear this morning. I'm going to yield to both of the Commissioners to give them an opportunity to provide commentary. Commissioner Washington, I'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Chair. So let me, I think last, the last time we were together, I pretty much said that this is where I was to go to the rollback rate and to keep the host at 70%. But I want to say that the reason that I was here was because we are in unprecedented times. And while Rockdale County has done everything that we're supposed to do as far as assessing your home at market, the market value, we haven't had the opportunity due to COVID to do a lot of education on why your taxes has gone up so much. And that's because of we're under state mandates to do certain things and to assess your properties at market value rates. I did have a town hall that we discussed the millage rate. I had our tax assessor, I had our tax commissioner, I had our finance director. All of us had a very robust discussion on how the millage rate gets set at where it is, what all the ingredients that went into the proposed tax assessment that you all received in the mail. And it was very well received by the public. And that was the first attempt to educate on why you received the tax, the proposed tax bill that you did. I do believe that because of the unprecedented times, because there are people that are still getting off of their feet because of COVID and the fact that we haven't had the opportunity to educate that we would normally have, it is appropriate to assess the taxes, the millage rate at the rollback rate and keep the host the same. However, for next year, we will hopefully be in a different situation. We can start now doing the education piece on why your property taxes went up 20, 30%. Please understand that right now, I think the finance director and the tax assessor said that our taxes are at the same rate that they would have been in 2010. We're working on a 2010 tax base. So that means that we haven't had substantial increases in 10 years in taxes. So we need to educate on why your taxes are moving up. And that's because the values of your property are indeed coming into market value of the rest of metropolitan Atlanta. We are considered a metro Atlanta county. Whether you moved here thinking that you were moving still in metro Atlanta or not, Rockdale County is still a part of metro Atlanta. So we have to keep those, that in mind when we look at the assessment of our property value. Finally, one of the things that came out in the town hall through the tax commissioner was that she does offer payment plans for the taxes, that she will gladly work with any residents on coming up with a plan after the tax bills go out. We can't, you can't prepay your taxes right now for whatever reason. But right now, you can, you can, after the tax bills go out, you can definitely go to her and set up a payment plan so that you won't lose your house in somebody's said in foreclosure or whatever. We are doing everything, she's definitely attuned to the fact that some people may need to have arrangements for their home, for their taxes. Also, seniors, we have a senior exemption. And so if you're not, it's not automatic. So if you're not seeing the senior exemption, then you need to go and make sure that you're getting all of your exemptions. That's something else that came out in the town hall. And our tax assessor is ready, willing, and able to go over your tax bills and make sure that you're getting your senior exemptions. So that's something else that you might want to consider. The final thing is that the county taxes, although we're the only entity that is streaming and accessible to you, I didn't see anybody from the BOC that helped at any kind of town hall to let you all know what they were doing with their millage rate. But their millage rate is also on your tax bill and you don't have a host exemption. You don't have any kind of exemptions from the school board taxes. And that millage rate is also reflective on your tax bill. So a lot of where you may have seen the increase may not necessarily have been from the county. It may have been from the Board of Education. And they are also another entity that you may want to express your concerns about, not just the fact that your taxes went up from them, but they may also be able to offer some kind of cuts in their budget so that your taxes may decrease there also. So I'm just saying that we're not the only people that you want to express your concerns about your tax bill too. We're just the ones that offer a public, very visible forum for you to host your, get your concerns out. So I'm very proud of this board, we heard you. We felt you when the tax bills, the proposed tax bills went out. I saw it myself and I do believe these are unprecedented times. But I just want to go on the record of saying that I'm doing this as a necessity and not a political philosophy, which means that I do, as a part of my philosophy, believe that if your tax value goes up, then your assessed value goes up, then you should pay for the improvements that you, and the taxes that you receive, the benefit of the improved value on your home in the form of taxes. So, but this year, I am at the rollback rate for the reasons that I have iterated.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams.
I think that Commissioner Washington has sincerely and articulately expressed so much of my feelings and she has educated us so well on the reasons that we have chosen to go to the rollback rate this year. She's also educated us on how the taxes are assessed and the properties are assessed and the taxes are then set. I want to reiterate that also that the Board of Education, and if you live in the city, the city of Conyers are also two other entities that will be on your tax bill. And so you need to take those into consideration also. I appreciate very much the town hall that Commissioner Washington had. I watched it and there was a lot of really valuable information that was given out. I do want to just say that by doing the rollback rate and because we know we're in just some really unusual times and people are out of work and having lots of financial issues, that also means that there may be some cutback in services or road repairs or some things that may have to be delayed. So it's a give and take on everybody's side. It does mean to continue with our budget as we have it set for this year, for 2020, that we will need to go into our general fund, our fund balance, our savings, to continue at the level that we have been. But I feel like that is totally justified because of the situation that we're in. I, you know, we don't know how long this is going to last or what impact it's going to have, but we can only do this and take things just one step at a time, one day at a time. And so I was very happy to be able to move that the millage rate was rolled back and that your 70% host will stay in place.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. In summary, I just want to say thank you to both of my colleagues. I too have heard from several of the residents here in Rockdale County who are living paycheck to paycheck and many on a fixed income. You're absolutely correct. These are unprecedented times that we've never seen before. There is no gauge in terms of when this pandemic is going to come to a complete end. But that does mean the word balance, balance internally for operations does include not perhaps or maybe, but we will be cutting services due to this decision. It will have a profound impact on our workforce. And I think that people need to be clear of that and understand that from a internal economic operation standpoint, that we're going to have to make some very tough decisions in terms of our workforce, in terms of the service delivery, what services that we really have to have here in Rockdale County for the citizens of this community. As many of you all know, we've already executed or implemented, should I say, a furlough for a good number of our employees. And we are approaching a time here, even with the remaining part of this year, that we're going to have to make some additional cuts. This decision this morning will definitely mean that we will have to consider cutting back the delivery of services. And it will have a profound impact on the workforce here in Rockdale County. It is a balance, it is a give and take, as spoken by both of the Commissioners. We understand the citizens and we understand where we are in these unprecedented times. I want to echo the sentiments of both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. Many people have turned the spotlight to the other two entities in this community. For those of you that live in the city limits of the city of Conyers, for those of you who, well, all of us who reside in Rockdale County, pay taxes to the Rockdale County Public School System, we're encouraging you to keep the lights shined on those other two entities. As Commissioner Washington very eloquently stated, we have a public platform. This BOC meeting is publicly aired on Facebook and so many other social media platforms so that we can be transparent and communicate with the citizens here in Rockdale County. Those other two entities, the Rockdale County Public School System and the city of Conyers, don't offer a platform such as this. We want to encourage you to engage, for those of you that live in the city limits, go over and visit the city council and express and let your voice be heard there as well. And for all of our residents who here in Rockdale County, make your way to the Board of Education's board meeting and share with them as well. Make sure you visit, take a look at your tax statement and you will see clearly who you are paying the highest taxes to. We want to make sure that all of the attention and the focus is not simply just on the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. We've heard from the citizens, we've heard you loud and clear. This board this morning has made the decision to roll back the millage rate. Director Rulich, is there any need for an executive session concerning this portion of our millage rate vote this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if that be the case, I want to call this portion of our meeting to adjournment. So the millage rate is now adjourned, we will completely transition right on into the regular scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting at this time. Good morning, once again, we are here at 9:03 Main Street in the Rockdale County Auditorium. We are now officially calling to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. We will start this meeting off with the invocation and pledge of allegiance from our good friend Pastor Shane Burns. Pastor Burns, come on up.
Thank you, let us pray. Dear only Father, Lord, we pray for your grace. Lord, we pray for your grace to us as we ask for wisdom, knowing that the prayer for wisdom is one you grant with joy and open-handed. So, Lord, as we make decisions about the future of our county, Lord, we pray that we would be filled with wisdom to know the steps you want us to take. Lord, we pray for grace that would overflow in our conversations with one another. May our words be seasoned with grace, may our hearts be filled with compassion, may our ears be open to understand those who have opinions that are different than ours. Lord, we pray for grace for our schools. Lord, as each parent and each student and each teacher is facing unknown challenges, Lord, we pray that your grace would strengthen them through this, that they would be filled with perseverance and that they would find a a new joy of, of learning even in these challenging times. And most of all, Lord, we pray for grace for justice, that our county, that our state, that our nation would be marked by justice and equality for all. And so, Lord, fill us with your love. Fill us with your grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you again to Pastor Burns, who serves as the Assistant Pastor of the Conyers First United Methodist Church, right here in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We certainly do appreciate Pastor you taking the time out this morning to come and lead us in a word of prayer and invocation along with our Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I think we have some special recognitions. Are there any? Okay, all right. No special recognition?
Worn it.
It keeps us moving right along.
Okay.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished business is item 2020-351.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a special use permit case 2020-01. It's an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended to authorize a special use permit for a recycling center located at 213, 214, and 215 Camden Industrial Parkway Northwest, Conyers, Georgia 30012, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This morning, this is before you for a second reading. We have been out to the site to visit the site. Planning Commission recommended approval with two conditions. However, since this has gone through the first public hearing process, there has been six more conditions added to the permit that we're in conversations with the applicant. So this morning, the planning staff is recommending, recommending that you send us back to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
So I move to refer this ordinance back to the Planning Commission as recommended.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second to refer this ordinance back to the Planning Commission. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2020-352.
And so, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'd like to take item 352 and 353 together. The first one is a future land use map case 2020-06. An ordinance to amend the Rockdale County Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map as amended so as to redesignate property located at 2385 and 0 G's Mill Road Northeast and 0 Glen Road Northeast, Conyers, Georgia 30012, from the light industrial and medium density residential future land use category to the high density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is for a second reading. The second one is a rezoning case 2020-09. An ordinance to amend the zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning property located at 2385 and 0 G's Mill Road and 0, and 0 again, Glen Road Northeast, Georgia 30012. This is from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to RM Multi-Family Zoning District to impose conditions upon the amendment to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is also for a second reading. These two items have also gone through the public hearing process, and just like the previous item, have had several conditions added to the future land use map request and the rezoning request. The planning staff recommends that this, both of these get sent back to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
Okay, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to refer both of these ordinances back to the Planning Commission as recommended.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second that we will refer both item number 352 and 353 back to the Planning Commission. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're moving now to our regular agenda. We will start with item 2020-354.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a contract with Univar USA Incorporated for the Water Resources Department. This is change order number one to contract 2018-165. This is to amend the contract to provide sodium permanganate in lieu of potassium permanganate in the amount of .917 dollars per pound. This is a unit price contract renewed one year until October 22nd, 2021.
So I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Yes, the second one is a contract with Carter Young Incorporated with the Finance Department. This is a lease agreement for 882 North Main Street for the Public Defender's Office in the amount of $56,603.41 per year for the first year, $58,301.52 for the second year, and $60,050.56 for the third year.
I move, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 356, please.
This is a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Transportation Department. This is to memorialize the acceptance of two local maintenance improvement grants, the L-MIG, for 2019 in the amount of $959,744.05, and for the 2020 L-MIG grant in the amount of $1,049,182.33.
So I move to approve this contract and, and the acceptance of these grants as, as published.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Commissioners, I just want to remind you that this is good news as we continue to move forward in a very progressive way with our Department of Transportation here in Rockdale County. As you know, all throughout COVID, we've been making our way throughout Rockdale County, making the improvements. And these grants allow us to expedite a lot of this work and get this work done in terms of resurfacing, repaving, and clearing up a good number of the potholes that exist throughout Rockdale County. I ask that all of the citizens and the residents of this community continue to be patient with us, pardon our progress, as we welcome these grants so that we can continue to do the improvements that are needed throughout Rockdale County. It has been properly motioned and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item 357, please.
This is a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation, Office of the Right-of-Way for our Transportation Department. This is a change order number one to contract 2017-66. This is for the Sigmund Road Multi-Use Trail. I know that Director Moretto loves these project numbers. I'm gonna skip right over that. Reimbursement for eligible property acquisition costs for the easements and right-of-way to extend the term through December 31st, 2021.
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 358, please.
This is with the Georgia Department of Transportation and their Office of the Right-of-Way. This is for our Transportation Department. This is change order number one to contract 2017-67. This is for the Sigmund Road Widening Phase Two. This is for the reimbursement for eligible property acquisition costs for easements and rights-of-way to extend the term through December 31st, 2021.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 359, please.
This is a contract with Litchy Commercial Construction Incorporated. This is for the Recreation and Maintenance Department. This is change order number two to contract 2019-112. This is for the Johnson Park Gymnasium, and due to unexpected delay of rock removal, the term must be extended through December the 23rd of 2020.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions?
No.
Or any comments?
They figured out why we're called Rockdale.
Yes.
The delay in, because of rock.
Definitely.
I'm sorry.
No, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. That's, that's largely part of the reason why we're called Rockdale, because in every backyard, front yard, or side yard, there's plenty of rock. It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 360, please.
This is a contract with Wheels on Wheels of America. This is through the Recreation and Maintenance Department, the Senior Services Division. This is the grant acceptance of the Pet Fights Project in the amount of $1,200.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
Don't both of you get excited all at the same time. It's been properly motioned and second. This is another grant moving in the right direction. Are there any question? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 361, please.
This is a contract with Snyder Geospatial, doing business as Q Public. This is through the Board of Assessor's Office. This is change order number one to contract 2014-157. This is to add online homestead application and appeal in the amount of $4,200 per year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions?
No question.
I don't have a question. Oops. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Just as I was reading through all of the notes, I thought this is a, this will make it so much easier for people to make sure they have a homestead exemption and then to create an appeal if they would like to after they receive their assessment. You know, we finally come into the 21st century, I guess, since we're in only 20 years in.
Commissioner Williams and I are twinning thoughts. I, I thought it was a great idea when our tax assessor presented it at the town hall. He's explained then that it's going to be something that would allow citizens to not have to come to the Board of Assessor's office. They can apply for their homesteads, exemptions, or if there are any exemptions, and they don't have to come to the office. So, and, and this is in line with our initiative, our joint initiative of, of bringing us technology forward, us becoming a more technologically savvy Board of Commissioners. So thank you, Mr. Barclay, for bringing this to us, and, and I'm, I'm excited about this initiative.
Absolutely. It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 362, please.
This is a contract with NAF Care Incorporated through the Sheriff's Office. This is for the inmate healthcare services. This is change order number one to contract 2020-98. It's to change the start date from September the 15th, 2020, to September the 1st, 2020, in an additional amount of $100,000.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor, are, are there any questions?
No. This is the one we talked about at Mozzie.
Yes, we did talk about this one at the last board meeting, and I think I mentioned then that they have been extremely responsive to the concerns that, that our stepping up team had and getting us the, assuring us that they will share the data with us that we need in order to pursue further grants. And so I'm, I'm happy to see that we're starting earlier with them.
And can I say this about this inmate healthcare services contract? And I'm, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, but the fact that the Sheriff's Department has put so much time and energy into, and research into coming, getting a service provider that is hearing the concerns of the community and giving us what we need to address things that he considers important. I, I think that the sheriff should be commended for that because he has, has done that. He has heard what the citizens have said about inmate services, and, and as a sheriff, he is adjusting our contracts and things like that to address those needs. So I would like to, whenever you hear another constitutional officer listening to the stu, the students, the citizens, then we have to support that initiative. So I think that, that we're doing that with these contracts.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 363, please.
Yes, this is a contract with the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse through the State Court. It's a grant acceptance for the stepping up recovery, an amount of $1,200 is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions?
Well, let me just say that with this grant, there will, the stepping up team will be hosting three recovery meetings, recovery events during September, which is recovery month. And, you know, we get, I have the flyers, and I, in fact, I will get those to our Public Relations Department right away. And just a huge support to those people who are in recovery, who have been in the criminal justice system and through the court system and are now trying to make changes in their lives, and they need support. They need to know that we care about them, that we recognize that they are individuals and people with concerns and lives that we, and, and need our help to help them move forward. And so that's what this $1,200 is going to be used for.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. Been properly motioned and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Yes, item 364, a request for alcoholic beverage licenses before you.
I, I move to approve these requests as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions concerning the alcoholic beverage licenses? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please. Item number 365.
This is a requisition for the Water Resources Department to Chemtrade Chemicals. This is for chemical polyaluminum chloride in the amount of $73,344.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 366, please.
This is a requisition for the Water Resources Department to Penn Co. Incorporated. These are for chemicals. It's for fluoride in the amount of $22,747.50.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 367, please.
This is a requisition for the Water Resources Department to Scottwood Industries. This is for chemical or solar salt, the amount of $51,030.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 368, please.
This is a requisition for the Water Resources Department to ESG Operations. This is for the water tank repair at the Sweetheart Tank in the amount of $224,300.
I move to approve the requisition as, as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I would like for somebody to tell us what a sweetheart tank is.
I just knew you was, I knew, I knew, I knew you couldn't let that pass without Dr. Gibbs at your own risk. Come on up to the- At your own risk, come on up to the to the microphone and give her a miniature lesson on the sweetheart tank.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, Madam, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
Thanks.
Sweetheart Tank is just the name of the tank over off of 138.
So they we named it sweetheart?
Sweetheart, that's right.
Well, just because the sweetheart classic was there.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so listen, I gotta pull a little bit out of the chairman's old school playbook. When you used to get directions, they would tell you by where someone used to live or this and that. You have no idea what they're talking about. Well, this is because sweetheart classic, she used to be on 138, so the tank is right there.
Right.
Okay, I just thought that if you were gonna name tanks, that sweetheart, it should be sweetheart Sherry Washington tank first.
Oh, wow.
Oh, so wait a minute, Dr. Gibbs, so now I really get it. It's not so much of the sweetheart part of it as much as she wants the Sherry Washington logo.
Okay.
We can make it happen. Put it on the tank.
Right.
Oh.
We got it.
Guess we'll be dedicating a tank, right?
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
All right, thank you. Well, I want to, before we do all of that, I want to get with our Director of Transportation because I'm concerned about the motorists driving down 138 and having to see that big sweetheart tank with Commissioner Washington's face on it.
Picture.
I don't want to cause no accidents.
That was good or bad.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, in the spirit of safety.
Okay, all right, we'll keep it as it is.
It's been properly motioned and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, item 369 please.
This is a requisition for the Water Resources Department. This is with ESG Operations and this is for water tank repair. And this is for the Clearwell Tank. The amount of $99,250.
This one isn't as appealing to have my name.
I don't think either one of them are that appealing.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
Then properly motioned and second, are there any questions about the Clearwell Tank?
None.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, item 370.
This is for request, the surplus of items, and this is through the Sheriff's Office.
I move to declare these items surplus.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, all right. All right, well, Director Rutledge, we're already down to a public comment here. Okay. And I'm going to afford an opportunity for those who've not had a chance yet to submit their red comments to comment cards to Chief Morgan to give them that opportunity at this time to get those submitted. While the chief is collecting those, I'll ask Director Rutledge, if she would be so kind and read the disclaimer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you so much. Up first, we'll have Mr. George Kelicak, come on up, Ms. Kelicak.
Okay, yeah.
If someone could assist me with Mr. Kelicak and his announcement, I'm not, I think he's yielding his time. Uh, sir, I'm going to ask that you come on up for the sake of time, uh, to come on up at this point and just take the allotted time that you do have.
Uh, I just want to make sure that the all the citizens can see these charts. That's why I was asking for assistance.
Okay, there you go. I thank you and your assistant, Mr. Haynes, in the right view of the camera.
Okay, could we restart the clock, please?
Don't worry about the clock, Ms. Kelicak, I'm just going right ahead.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, appreciate everybody coming out this morning on a rainy day. I'm George Kelicak, I have the Taxpayer Association. Our purpose is to inform the citizens of Rockdale County regarding the correct management of taxpayer dollars. Uh, first of all, I've taken several months. It I I spent $85 of my own money to provide you this information on these enlargements. So I would appreciate it if I could go through each one. You'll see here, these are all the salaries and benefits of the county employees from 2010 through 2020, broken down by category. It's hard to look at all of that at one time. So I've made developed some graphs that I can share with the staff and all the directors at some point, if you'd like me to do so. I have them in eight and a half by 11 comps. Next, Mr. Haynes. All right, this will just show the tax percentage increases over the last few years because people sometimes like to see graphs instead of numbers. So that's why I'm presenting this to you in this manner. As you can see, we've had an increase every year. Thank you. This is the graph of the Rockdale County employees. And we've had a 15% increase over the last few years, 165 employees. Uh, that affects tax dollars. I'm not sure how everything's being vetted and why we have such an increase, but I think each individual hire, we need to place close attention to what their duties are. Next. This is a graph of our property tax collections. And as you can see, they were up years ago. They went way down and they come back up, but our rate has decreased as far as tax collections. So this would be something that an economist, an actuary, uh, that would say, why is this happening? And get into this, that's why I'm showing you these types of charts and graphs. Next, please. This is the motor vehicle tax collected. As you can see, we had a drop several years, but it started to come back up. So that means to me, I got with the tax commissioner, and we have had some additional automobiles. Next. Um. This will show you in the Recreation Department, uh, that has several different departments underneath of it. But we've had a over a half a million dollar increase in four years in salaries and benefits. Really high, I think somebody needs to take a look at it. Next, this is Transportation. We've had a over a $200,000 increase in the last few years. Again, questioning. Next, we have Senior Services, salaries and benefits, going in a downward direction while our we're increasing the number of senior citizens in Rockdale County. So just a few facts. We have over 14,000 citizens that are in poverty right now in Rockdale County. 43% are employed. Medium household income, $54,000. We really need to watch some expenses, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, of where we're spending our tax dollars. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, I would recommend this administration look at trying to find a retired economist, actuary, and CPA to help this administration move forward in the future. And ending, as Zig Ziglar would say, let's not go too fast or go alone. To go far, let's go together. We're here to help you, uh, Mr. Chairman. And you can pick up the phone and call me. Now certainly go through this information with yourself, your administration, and your directors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelicak, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the fine citizens here in Rockdale County. Next up, I would like to call at this time, uh, Mr. Garvin Haynes.
Chairman, before I get started, you have an item on number 364 concerning liquor license. Did I see that information?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
He wants to see that information.
Looking for the application for the liquor license, I get it to you after the board meeting. All right, you need to see, okay, so an alcoholic beverage license, the one that I have with me right now contains fingerprints and a background check, I can't give that to you right now. So I'll give it to you after the meeting.
So Mr. Haynes, let me support what Director Rutledge just said because what we do, we pre-publish the agenda and gives affords everyone an opportunity to review the agenda before the actual board meeting. Um, we certainly like to make that information readily available for you through the Planning and Development Department. Uh, currently at this time, we don't have that right here on hand, but it's no issue, you can certainly take a look at that.
My name is Garvin Haynes. I'd like to address the chairman about an article that was in the paper concerning a company called Positive Outcomes LLC, uh, that, according to the information in the paper, that was being hired for $297,000 to provide childcare services for county employees. And I have two real issues with it. One, that the other two VOC numbers, of course, didn't know anything about it. And that the county procurement policy states that you have the power, along with Ms. Miller, to hire professional services up to $100,000 per year. And that this thing was put together so that it was broke down into three different timeframes for under $100,000, at $97,000 thereabouts, in order to hire this company. Now, this company was first incorporated on 7/16/2019 and re and thus lapsed on 8/7/2020. And, uh, they re-registered on 8/15/2020. Now, you can't find anything except that the owner, whose name, according to the Secretary of State's office, is a T-O-N-E-T-H-I-A Beasley. And the only one I could find in the whole state is from Augusta, Alcois Dino. Now, my real issue is the integrity of Ms. Miller's office. Knowing what the procurement policy is, I've lost faith in anyone in that office that would go around the procurement policy to try to have this contract with a company that you cannot find on Google anywhere to spend $297,000 with a one-year-old company. Ms. Miller has lost my confidence in anybody in that office. And the policy needs to be changed back to where, in my opinion, a professional services for the sake of the VOC, to be $25,000 to put a ring on the chairman's ability to spend $100,000 at will, but certainly not $297,000. And us have no control in the faith of the Department of Ms. Miller over finance to do her job in a honorable way. I'm ashamed of both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up, I'll have Ms. Tiffany Shepherd, come on up, Ms. Shepherd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams. My name is Tiffany, and I'm an employee of the Finance Department. And I'm here to respectfully ask that the Board of Commissioners reconsider opening the Virtual Academic Learning Center for county employees. We see this as a county employee benefit. And this employee benefit would enable our county employees to continue to provide the outstanding and excellent services to our residents without interruption while putting their minds at ease, knowing their children are in a safe environment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County and the workforce here at Rockdale County Government. Next up is Ms. Viola Harris, Ms. Harris, come on up.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak today. I too am here to ask Commissioner William and Commissioner Washington to reconsider opening the Academic Support Sis Center. Um, I do have two children that I did want to sign up for the Academic Support Center. And I believe that it is imperative, not just for myself, but to a lot of the employees that also signed up for the Academic Support Center. There are a lot of employees that signed up, um, and they missed the opening for other centers because they already had a plan in place with this Academic Support Center. To know that we were coming to work every day and our children being in a safe environment, probably not even more than five minutes from us, well taken care of, was a burden lifted off of our shoulders. It was to be helpful for the employees. And I knew that it's been said that the funding or the the money should be have gone to the entire community, but the employees of Rockdale County is the community. We are part of this community. We are entitled to have our children in a safe place as well. I just want the Commission, the Commissioners to reconsider opening that Academic Support Center. I know that a lot of people are thinking or saying that it was coming from the budget within Rockdale County, but as a reminder, it is coming from the federal CARES Act. That is the funding and the money that I believe is coming from. So just to keep that in mind, that there are a lot of people who are now have been put out, they're now in distress, for lack of a better term, they're pulling their hair out because they don't know what they're going to do. School has already started. So if you can, please, I urge you, I implore you to please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens as well as the workforce here in Rockdale County Government. Next up, we will be calling Ms. Alandra Bean, come on up, Ms. Bean.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams.
Good morning.
Before I start my opening statement, I want to ask the board, is there any way that I can read other letters from fellow employees that were not able to be here? They thought they could make it, but they went on to email me the information today. They wanted their letter to be read aloud today.
Please proceed.
Today, I stand in solidarity with my fellow coworkers that were impacted by the cancellation of the Academic Support Center. We were all excited about this great opportunity to be able to work and have a peace of mind that our children will be learning in a safe environment, as I've expressed my concerns via email to the entire Board of Commissioners this past weekend. Commissioner Washington stated that we could service the entire community as opposed to just select a few people in the community. Why, I do understand your position, Commissioner Washington. Wanting to help the community, I think that is a great idea and very thoughtful of you. But we, the employees, are the community. We work for the citizens of Rockville County. In addition to that, Commissioner Williams, I do understand your position, wanting to ensure the taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. You mentioned in your email response to me that there are alternate solutions to take advantage of the vouchers for the cost of using other providers. From my understanding, the voucher total cost will be two thousand dollars. If one hundred employees use the voucher at Team Three and Chief Corey Hamburg's church, the Life Center, that will be a total of two hundred thousand dollars. When it comes to the Academic Support Center and the vouchers, there will be a tremendous cost involved. The great thing about the cost, the county will be reimbursed under the CARES Act. The employees should have the option to choose whether children are educated. The center being located at Johnson Park in our community was very convenient for the employees commute to work. We all felt at ease, knowing our children would be learning at one of our on-site facilities. In closing, on behalf of the employees of Rockville County that sign up for this great program, we humbly ask that you please reconsider opening the Academic Support Center. And I'm going to proceed and read the letters that I receive, and I do have copies for all of you. Dear Board of Commissioners, I'm writing this letter regarding my recent inconvenience due to the cancellation of the Academic Support Center. Being recently employed full-time at the Rockville County Sheriff's Office and a mother of two school-aged children, my family and I were looking forward to start of the new school year with the help of the center. When I became aware of this program, I had an immediate sense of relief, knowing that my children would have on-site academic assistance, which also worked with my schedule. Recently, I've been forced to make prior arrangements on such short notice in hopes that it will work for my children and I. I can't stress how important it would be to the employees of Rockville County and myself to have you reconsider your decision on the Academic Support Center. Thank you, Deputy Vanessa Moore. Dear Board of Commissioners, it is with heavy heart that I write this email to you. I don't have the ability to physically vocalize my disappointment, but I am hopeful that this letter doesn't fall on deaf ears. I am saddened that the Academic Support Center was dissolved in a news interview on Channel Two. I have two school-aged children that would have had an opportunity to benefit from this program. This hasty decision has left many of us scrambling for alternate care options. I am certain that when you are not directly impacted by circumstances, you don't fully evaluate the effect. Please activate your contingency plan and help the people who serve the citizens of Rockville County. And that's from the Sheriff's Office, an employee of the Sheriff's Office. Dear Rockville County Board of Commissioners, I am writing to express my disappointment with the cancellation of the Academic Support Center. This decision to cancel the Academic Support Center at the last minute has put me in a bind. My daughter is enrolled in Newton County School System. There have been many sad and recent changes to the two thousand twenty twenty-one academic calendar within the past month. The in-person option was taken away from us on August the seventh, when it was decided that all Newton County schools would start virtually. Within days of this decision, I was excited and relieved to hear about the Academic Support Center. It was the perfect balance to my daughter, still being able to receive her education and me being able to work and provide for my family. The Academic Support Center was going to be cost-effective for my family. Prior to the pandemic, my daughter was going to the after-school for fifty dollars a week. The price quote I'm receiving now for local learning centers are minimal at one hundred and fifty dollars a week. I have an eighteen-month-old as well that has weekly childcare expenses. This is not do- durable for my family. Due to the sudden cancellation of the Academic Support Center, I am forced to take emergency FMLA and reduction in pay to ensure my daughter continues to receive her education and a trusted learning environment. I humbly ask you reconsider your decision regarding the Academic Support Center. Thank you, Dana White, Superior Court. Thank you for the invite to today's VOC meeting. Due to responsibilities and previous commitments, I cannot be at today's VOC meeting. I am not for sure my story will help anyways. After the survey went out on Newton County School District changed their start date yet again, it is now September eighth. So in a way, I feel blessed as my plan for my children is ever-changing, and now I have to readjust. This is my story. Feel free to share it on behalf, if you would like. I have two boys, sixth and tenth grade. I was looking forward to the open house to see how it was structured, and how I was going to be able to utilize this employee benefit. My boys are older and pretty self-efficient, but a place to focus on priorities and get some social interaction sounded great. With all the changes with the schools and the schedules, my husband was able to change his work to have Tuesdays and Wednesdays off, unless mandatory overtime was ordered. Our current plan was to see if we could bring the boys Mondays, Thursdays, and some Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, depending on the work schedule. Yes, I know the oldest is too old for the proposed help. I did mention him in my survey and the comments, as I felt it would have been nice if we could have focused the place to do his work, and if he completed his work, he could possibly help tutor some of the younger children to help out wherever as a volunteer. Now without the learning center, I'm going to depend on my tenth grader to help my twelfth grader through his studies and to complete his homework in a timely manner on the days my husband is not able. It's not ideal, but we have to make it work. It's my personal life. It is the ideal world without the learning center. I will be allowed to work from home on the days my husband cannot be at home. This way, I'm not stressed over whether there are connect- connections, issues, or struggles at home while I'm at work. I know there are alternate government options out there, such as the Emergency FMLA Program, where I could stay with my children and help them with resolving school, but I'd rather not have to go that route. Thank you, Katie Osburn, Code Enforcement. Dear Commissioner Nesbit and Board, I would like to share the impact of how this recent decision to cancel the Virtual Learning Center has impacted my family. As a member of public safety here in Rockville County, it was a relief to see that an option was being made to ensure I could ease the worry of my childcare for my son. The challenge for me as a mother has been having to navigate the desires to continue the high level of service that the citizens of Rockville County deserve while addressing the very real need of my family. It was a relief to see that some plan was being considered to address a very real need that parents of school-aged children are currently facing, especially having served as an essential employee the entire pandemic episode while others were able to be at home to care for their children. I am a mom to a five-year-old autistic son, excuse me, asthmatic son. The emergency closure of school means that I have utilized family assistance for his care while I was kind of called upon to continue to service the people of Rockville County. With school returning, my niece, who has been gracious and tending to him, has now to focus on his academics on her senior year. So getting the announcement of the pu- of the virtual center was timely. Admittedly, I still had many reservations with the continued public health crisis, but at least there was a controlled location that allowed for small groups and adverse quality controls not committed to by other local centers. To get a last-minute notification that the offer had been rescinded is absolutely gut-wrenching. If the expectation is that employees should continue the work of serving, their needs cannot be ignored, nor should they be unheard. Rumor contingencies that other daycares may be offered to supplement our needs are simply disheartening because I don't work for them, and I haven't gone out to risk my life for all these months for them. I've done it for Rockville County. I did it when it, when counties all around us gave first responders hazardous pay, and Rockville County did not. I did it when people around me were infected and even died, but others in Rockville County worked from home and did it well. One thing that is difficult to express, that in working for government, especially law enforcement, people pull out all the bills and whistles when you die. But the time to care is when people are alive. I understand that there is a need for families throughout Rockville County, but how do we serve those people when we can't take care of our own children? If you're planning to give us stipend, allow us to pay private caregivers who can take small groups of children. I absolutely love serving Rockville County, but being put in a position to choose between taking care of children for Rockville County and my own child is really no choice at all. If the concern is about fairness throughout the county, I would say that fairness is ensuring that we can continue to serve the people who need us to show up, focus, and empower to serve them. Respectfully submitted, Carol Westbrook-Patrick. Thank you. And I will leave copies for all of the Commissioners on the letters that I've just read. I'll leave them up here at the post.
Can you bring them to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you to Ms. Bean and all of the other speakers, our employees, who took time out to come and express collectively to the board. Some have already shared in email form as stated their sentiments, the impact of their individual families and children. I certainly want to commend each of you for coming out this morning. Uh, Ms. Bean, you've done an excellent job articulating the sentiments of those who submitted letters who could not be here from various departments throughout county government. And for all of those of you all who did show up and was able to come and participate in and expressing yourself, let me just say that we hear you loud and clear, and we certainly do appreciate. I'm going to take a moment here, uh, to yield to both of the Commissioners to afford them an opportunity to, um, respond to, um, the comments. Commissioner Washington.
So I'm going to treat this as board comments. I'm going to make my other comments first, and then I'll gladly address the concerns of the Rockville County employees. First of all, um, Rockville County schools are back in session, and they're in unprecedented times. Um, they're at a virtual learning, uh, capacity, which everybody knows. And, um, from what I understand, Zoom went down nationwide yesterday, so that put everybody in a pickle. So we are praying for the educators and those being educated in these unprecedented times. But I would like to commend the school board and, um, our superintendent for doing an outstanding job on, and keeping things rolling, coming out with a plan of action. Um, I even heard that a lot of educators were actually e- excited, somewhat excited about being able to hone their craft in a different venue. So, um, Rockville County Schools and the school system, I commend you for going forth and putting an outstanding effort into, um, educating our schoolchildren. Our town hall meeting, um, the virtual town hall meeting on Let's Talk About Taxes was a huge success. We had several, um, viewers on Facebook. Um, uh, hopefully the next time we do this, we can figure out how to Instagram Live too. But we were on Facebook, and, um, it was a tremendous success, so much that the Tax Commissioner, Com- Tax Commissioner Washington, um, actually said, we need to do this more often to talk about different things or different, um, platforms or different ways and, and or different ways in which the tax bills go out and just different things. So Finance Director and Tax Assessor, that is your Tax Commissioner, wanting that, and I'll be happy to oblige her, so get ready. Um, thirdly, I would like to congratulate this board, um, for listening to the citizens of Rockville County, understanding the unprecedented times that we're going for through in this host environment, I'm sorry, not the host environment, in this pandemic, and setting, rolling back the miller's rate and, um, um, giving, keeping the host the same. However, I want everybody to hear clearly that that has consequences. As the chairman has stated, um, that means that we have not funded any capital for next year with the host. That means that, um, we are going to go into fund balance. That means that we may have to make other hard decisions as far as furloughs or, um, cutting of services. But we hear you, and we are going to roll up our sleeves and work out that, those issues. Now, let me, um, address the concerns of Rockville County employees. First of all, those of you who have been with me through my tenure as County Commissioner have seen all of the things that I have done and all of the things that I have championed for the employees of Rockville County. Those of you who know me and have known me for the entire time that I have lived in Rockville County know that my story is that I was a single parent. I did this by, I, I raised a child by myself. I went to college with a baby. I went to law school with a middle schooler. I went to graduate school with, I think she was in elementary school. I've had three jobs. I've worked, I've walked from one job to another. I've had to pick my child up from, from daycare, I'm sorry, to get to daycare, we used to walk a mile to daycare and walk, me walk a mile back to get on a bus to go to school and to go to our, to, um, work. So I understand firsthand the challenges of daycare or childcare, um, in just any environment. I understand the necessity of having to go to work or to school or anything else, um, wanting your child to be safe and taken care of. And anybody who knows me knows that tho- that would be paramount on my mind when I make a decision regarding childcare in this county. So, number one, I was thinking about you and your children. Because the first thing is, I don't understand how we, as a county, can close a building and support the Board of Education in their closing of the schools and then ask that those same children come into a facility that we are hosting. That's number one. I, I couldn't get my mind around that. And we, when we were given that contract, we had no opportunity to discuss any of those, um, issues. We had no opportunity to look at how this was going to be laid out. We were just given, first, we were just told that it was going to be a distance learning center. We didn't have any idea of the capacity. We didn't have any idea on how this entire thing was going to be rolled out. None of that was given to us. Then secondly, after me asking for at least, at least one week for the budget, once it was told that we were going, that an Academic Learning Center was going to be rolled out, I kept asking, what is the budget? How much is this going to cost? How, wh- wh- how much is going to be expended? What all are we going to be expending money on? It wasn't, the sign-up came, and I'm still asking for how much this is going to cost. That was never given to us. It wasn't until two days before the Thursday that we decided that this wasn't- It wasn't until two days before the Thursday that we decided that this wasn't going to, we couldn't do it, that we even got the amount. And at that point, we could not approve it because the amount was outside of anything that we have set as an expenditure for this county. It didn't go through the procurement process. It was outside of the $100,000. And I sat with an employee and was trying to figure out how to make this right so that you all, as county employees, could have a peace of mind for your children to go to school. And with all of that, I could not do it based on the oath of office that I took. I was not going to try to make something right that everything underneath it was wrong. And I, and so that goes to Plan B. What, how can we give our employees something that they can have peace of mind of where their children are and come to work and work as employees? So that is where we came up with the paid time off, which somebody just texted me asking me how you all are able to be at a county commission meeting. And my response was, we did give PTO and we came up with a voucher system so that you can choose. You have a choice into who you will have your children with that also supports Rockdale County businesses. And you will be given the ability to choose a Rockdale County business. We would be supporting businesses. We would be supporting you all and hopefully your children will have adequate supplemental education. We have to also remember that this distance learning center, it was a supplement to the education that was going on in the Rockdale County public school system. And it is still my contingency that a $297,000 contract where we provide the venue, we provided the, we had laptops that were already purchased for a program that we didn't even know that laptops were going to be used. We had no idea of all of the expenditures that were going, that were going into this program. So I stand behind my, the fact that I think that we could have, as a board, come up with a less expensive alternative that gave you all a peace of mind had we been conferred with on the front end. I'm very sorry that this happened at a very, at an inopportune time. But hopefully with the PTO and the reimbursement procedure, some of that will be made up to, made up for. But somebody said it themselves, that they were just getting ready to go to an open house. So you all didn't even know the setup that, and how close your children were going to be in proximity to each other. The open house was just about to occur on, I think that Thursday or maybe Friday. So I don't understand how your mind was so at ease and you hadn't even seen the proposal. As far as somebody saying that it was, number one, entitled. This is not an entitlement for us to provide childcare services. People knew that childcare was going to be needed months ago, especially when Rockdale County went out for, decided to go virtual. Newton County hasn't even started school as of yet. I know that because I have two nieces that are in Newton County schools. So there's still plenty of time for Newton County residents. And we are supplementing Newton County residents to get their childcare situations in order. And somebody said that this is not coming from the general fund, it's coming from CARES Act money. Absolutely. But we are still stewards of those, that CARES Act funding. And I think that it's imperative that we make sure that the money goes as far as possible. And if we have to, I think that there are also other people that could benefit from $297,000 serving at this, at the time of this, it was only 56 students for 18 weeks. There's no educator, even on the highest level of administration, that gets paid $297,000 for 18 weeks of service. I really think that we should have had the opportunity to talk about that contract before this whole thing was even rolled out to you all. But, and once again, I'm not saying that, I really do hope that the alternative that we put in place, understanding that this entire pandemic and this entire thing has been, has been uncomfortable for all of us. But we have to make decisions that enable us to sleep at night. And to approve that contract, I couldn't do it. I could not do it. There was no way to make it right, that contract. And the way it was rolled out and the fact that we, we felt as if we were kept in the dark until the last minute, I couldn't approve it. I didn't agree with so many things about it. And I am a steward of the entire county's money and resources, whether it's federal or state or local. And although in, in theory, it was a great idea, it, it just, the way it was presented and the dollar amount, I couldn't let it, I couldn't, I couldn't sleep. The honest thing was, I could not sleep that night with all of the things that were wrong in that contract. And there was no way that I could make it right. So, let me see, I'm trying to make sure that I got all of the points out that I wanted to address with it. Hazardous pay, somebody said, there was a comment about hazardous pay. When I was asked to give my priorities, which have not been rolled out, one of the very first thing, the things that I've asked for, and I've already talked to the sheriff about, was making sure that the first responders had hazardous pay so that we can show the people that are in Rockdale County first responders. And I've even asked for it for poll workers, I don't know if that's going to work out. But I've asked for it for first responders and poll, other people that have been in the frontline, that they do receive hazardous pay. While I'm rolling it out, I also want to do something that will help business owners, small business owners who have been tremendously affected by COVID. We are still working on these initiatives, but I just want people who, the person who flouted that we have not done anything, to know that we are working on that initiative. And that's forthcoming. I think that is everything that I have. And hopefully, if I think of something else, I will be given the opportunity to address it again.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Williams?
So first and foremost, I want to say that my top priority the entire time I've been in office has been for families. I think when our families are stable, our communities are stable. It, when I was first shared, first heard about this program, I thought, well, that's a great idea. But then that didn't mean approval. It meant I needed to see further information, dollars, contracts, that kind of thing. I, I did not see those until just last week. It, I have had people say, as a retired teacher, how can you possibly not care about the children? I do care deeply about the children. I care about their education. I care about their parents. Education is an entire complex system and it requires the entire family and the entire community. But this was not a contract that was presented properly. It was never approved by the Board of Commissioners. It, my feeling was, the end does not justify the means. We, we must be honest and we must follow the procurement policy that was put in place for a reason, that we, as a Board of Commissioners, in its entirety, we stewards over the taxpayer dollars, whether those taxpayer funds were, came from federal sources, state sources or local sources. That was the purpose of, that's the purpose of those policies, is to protect you and to protect all of our citizens. I, I had no trouble imagining a scenario that went through your hearts and went through your minds as this virtual learning center was not able to take place. As a mother who worked with five children, I know that I would have thought this was a great thing. I know that it would have been very helpful. I know that our employees would have benefited from this. But I also know, again, that I had to be honest and true to myself and to my values, my core value, that as a commissioner, my role is to oversee the budget and to make sure that it is administered properly and according to policy. There were several things. I had a teacher write me and say, heck, I would do it for $150,000 and that would include paying aides to help me. So I know that that amount was exorbitant. There's also the issue of all the laptops that were bought. And in fact, as far as I am aware, every Rockdale student has been issued a laptop for their use in, in their virtual learning. So that would have, would be a double, an expense that was not necessary in providing a second laptop to some of those children. Again, it's, it has, I have lost sleep over this one. And it has been a difficult decision. But as, as a commissioner, my first responsibility is to protect those funds, to make sure that they are being used wisely, that they are being used truthfully, that they're being used in accordance to our, our policies. And that's all I'm going to say about that. I do want to compliment again the Tax Assessor's Office on getting this program set up online so that people can file for a home exemption and an appeal online. I think that's going to be very beneficial. I think there are some things that have come out of this pandemic that have accelerated our recognition and our, of, of technology that can be used effectively to keep people from having to go places. I remember years ago, decades ago, when banks first put in windows where you could drive up and, and do your banking and nobody used them because nobody, everybody wanted that personal contact. But now, of course, over the years, people got used to it and they didn't have to get out of their cars and they still had some personal contact with the person behind the window. I think that, that effect is, we're seeing that now also, that many of our services, many of our meetings can be held virtually and still have that personal interaction that, that is important for people. We, we need that socialization. So, so I'm glad that the Tax Assessor has taken that step. I'm also glad that our board meetings are able to be screened virtually and that our community can support and attend and in fact, go back and watch at a later time if that fits their schedule better. As far as the recovery services, the three recovery events in September, the first one will be held September 9th. And there are flyers out already. I noticed Michael Hutchinson has, has those flyers with the Rockdale Coalition and they are being circulated. The second one will be September 23rd and the third one will be September 30th. And they will, they each have a different theme and a different focus. Each one of them will be from 5:30 to 7:30 in the evenings. So hopefully, the public will take some time to attend part or all of one or all three and see the work that's being done in the Accountability Court and with our stepping up team also. We will not meet till after Labor Day. Make sure you are safe. Make sure you keep your mask on and be socially distant from people. It's disturbing to see lots of people all in one place, close together with no masks on. I can't remember if I shared this at the last meeting, but there was a study done in Kansas. Chairman, do you remember if I showed that?
You did not, that was part of our interview for the mask order.
So in Kansas, 90 counties do not have a mask ordinance. 15 counties do. So some researchers at one of the universities thought this would be the perfect opportunity to compare those two groups, those two counties, and to see what happens with their, the rates of COVID-19 and whether they're going up, staying the same or going down. So in the 90 counties that did not have a mask mandate, the numbers stayed stable. They just, they didn't change. They, they were stable across the board. In the 15 counties that did have mask mandates, the numbers went down. Now that seems pretty obvious, but there's a second factor here that's really important. Those 15 counties that had the mask mandate and saw those numbers go down were the urban counties. They were the urban counties where people rode mass transit, where they lived in close conditions, where many of the minority populations lived, which also indicates that there were many with underlying health conditions. The numbers went down by that one simple thing of wearing a mask. So I've had some complaints about government over, you know, override taking over because of our mask mandate. But I assure you that that mandate has been made in the best interest of the citizens of our, our county. And I just implore you to get your mask out, make them look as cute as you can, as sophisticated as you want, have them make a statement, you know, something on them that says something that means something to you. But wear your mask. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. At this time, I want to call up our Director of Transportation, Mr. John Moretto, to give us an update on the condition concerning the Rockbridge Road Bridge at Lake Capri.
Happy noontime, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I would like to talk about the road closure at Rockbridge Road over the Lake Capri. First off, I'd like to say thank you to the citizens, to the residents that have called concerning the detour, all the comments, all the questions. I really appreciate it. I think that we've used that, we've heard you. We have made some modifications to the detour that make it a lot more effective and a lot better. So thank you very much. If anyone has any further comments on it, please give me a call. John Moretto, 470-529-5967. If you are here, I'll personally take your call. If you, I'm here, I'll personally take your call. I'll listen and give, you know, to what the concerns are. That number again is four seven zero, five two nine, five nine six seven. So concerning the bridge closure and the road closure, Thursday, August twentieth, the bridge approach embankment on Rockbridge Road over Lake Capri failed. RDOT and Stormwater were on the scene within minutes and managing traffic control and assessing the bridge. The cave-in required the county to close the road to all traffic in full coordination with nine one one and our emergency service teams, which include Chief Dan Morgan at approximately five PM on the same day. The bridge is an approximate nineteen foot by twenty foot steel beam structure of indeterminate age. Even though I was informed by one resident, Miss Susan McNeely, that the bridge was constructed in the early nineteen sixties. So that makes the bridge around sixty years old. This structure has a significant history of emergency repairs and flooding concerns. The latest repair and improvement by RDOT happened last week with additional asphalt patching and additional delineation, including signing, pavement marking, and hazard tape along the bridge parapet. Our review of the area found that the road embankment, bridge, urban abutment in the northwest corner of the bridge failed and slopped off into the water under and adjacent to the bridge. This failure created an approximate three foot by six foot hole in the road right before the bridge structure. So actually, the bridge did not fail. The bridge approached, the road approached failed. The RDOT team moved a large steel plate, which was approximately eight foot by ten, ten foot long, one inch thick and weighing over two thousand pounds over the cave-in area. As noted earlier, traffic control was implemented from the moment RDOT arrived on the scene. An emergency detour was set up at the time of the road closure. The emergency detour allowed RDOT to fabricate additional signs and procure more detour items such as barricades and flags for safer but a longer current detour. After multiple discussions with the Lake Capri HOA President Marilyn Cook and other concerned citizens, RDOT revised the detour plan. So once again, we heard the citizens, we listened to their comments, we listened to their suggestions. This detour included Lake, includes Lake Capri Road Northwest, Old Covington Highway Southwest, Turner Hill Road and Union Grove Road, which is a detour of approximately six point six miles that replaces the point four mile normal routing. Rockdale County coordinated with both DeKalb County and the City of Canyors since the revised detour passes through both municipalities. Please be patient as the county replaces the failed outdated structure with a new, much safer, permanent bridge that will last for the next one hundred years or longer. In addition, the bridge roadway approaches will be improved with a wider roadway typical section and guard rail alongside all four corners of the bridge. Additional details regarding the bridge replacement will be discussed after several emergency response engineering teams provide their full assessments over the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much for listening and do you have any questions?
I'll yield to Commissioner Washington.
Could you explain to us and everybody who's listening exactly what it approaches as opposed to what the approach to a bridge is?
So normally a bridge has two abutments on either side of the bridge. If you think of, let's say you have a stream and you have an abutment here and you have an abutment here. Your road has to ramp up on both sides in order to provide the separation with the stream. That abutment usually is a concrete or a steel or a retaining wall type structure that holds back the embankment from falling. If you didn't have that, it would fall into the stream. You know, that's on both sides. With the bridge that we're talking about here, on the south side, you have the concrete abutments. On the north side, you have nothing. There's just, it's just two steel piers. You have a steel cross member and then the abutment, the, the earthwork and all the gravel and all of the large riprap that's in that area. All what's happened is that slopped off into the, into the lake and caused the road to fail at that point. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Williams, any questions for Director Moretto?
No, I really liked that explanation of what exactly happened so that it, it made, it made it clear in my head. Thank you.
Very good. And thank you, Director Moretto. Let me say, Commissioners, this is both a joint project that is being addressed by the Department of Transportation and Stormwater Management. As stated, this bridge is right on top of the Lake Capri itself. At this time, I'm going to call up a Director, Dr. Ann Kimbrough, from the Stormwater Management Department to give her overview and her environment from her department's perspective. Dr. Kimbrough.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon already. Pardon me. It's a pleasure to work with your colleagues on this matter in particular. It's a good example. We have been on the phone or we've been communicating nonstop almost since Thursday evening. And you did give a great summary. I just want to be brief, looking at Commissioner Washington. I will be brief. And what I'm going to do is before I say roll tape, something I always love to say, I want to thank Felicia Glover, Sean Kimball, Director Diaz, Con Waldrop, Waldrop and Orlando, who are in the back providing an educational, the last three are providing, and, and Paola Harris, providing an educational opportunity for citizens and for all of us to learn a little bit more about stormwater on this very rainy day. And I did forward to you one of our hotspots that is, that have already, has already caused some problems. So with that said, we just want to begin, and I really want to thank Director Diaz. We want to begin our informational campaign. Today is like our red letter or, you know, rain letter day. So with that said, I'll just have you learn a little bit more about stormwater on one of our first videos.
Thank you.
How does the stormwater crew work for you? The stormwater department must inspect and maintain insurance infrastructure, educate the public about proper stormwater management, and enforce practices to reduce pollution caused by stormwater runoff.
And our day, today activities are cleaning pipes, installing pipes, maintaining the infrastructure that we have currently in the county and replacing infrastructure.
We might be digging out a pipe in someone's yard one day to, across grain, going across the road to working in the back of someone's yard, like going toward detention ponds or creeks or rivers.
Educating the public starts with our citizens, from our children to our citizens. Everyone can help to reduce runoff by putting litter in this place, not putting debris such as oil or raspings in the storm. Our stormwater erosion and sediment inspectors help manage construction work sites to ensure that excess sediment doesn't end up in our water supply.
My job is to make sure that erosion control is under control and that everything is done to prevent the creeks, lakes getting contaminated or not from erosion.
I check construction sites, any type of land disturbing activity. Because land disturbing activity then gives us loose soil and when it rains, it carries that sediment with it into our waterways. So we try and set up different procedures and different structures to keep the sediment on the site at its source so that it never reaches the waterways.
To learn more about what is going on in Rockdale County, please follow the Stormwater Facebook page at facebook.com/RCSWManager. We are here to help make Rockdale County safer and a better place to live.
I want to assure you that there are additional workers in the Stormwater Department. We do have many employees who are helping with customer service and I was glad to hear Commissioner Washington discuss what the tax commissioner is offering to citizens. So we are excited about what's going on, given the challenges that we have. The excitement is only to help us rectify major issues that have been around for more than forty years and with eroding pipe. Any questions there?
Any questions, Commissioner Washington?
No, thank you so much.
Commissioner Williams?
No, thank you.
Once again, to Director Kimbrough and Director Moretto, working hand in hand on our Rockbridge Road project as they are on many projects, because when you talk about stormwater and dealing with some of the issues, you have to include and incorporate transportation with those efforts. So we certainly do appreciate the collaboration of both of those departments. I also want to point out, in addition, Director Moretto actually talked with several of the members of the Lake Capri community. Once we had the breach in the, the roadway concerning the bridge there at Rockbridge Road, we had to immediately begin to detour the traffic as they began to block off the road for safety. We received several calls, text messages and emails from local residents in the Lake Capri area that we would consider not routing the traffic into the heart of their community, creating an additional problem and reroute that traffic to the outer area of the community. And I tell you that Transportation did a fantastic job talking with the HOA president and many members of the Lake Capri community where we were able to reroute that traffic safely outside of the heart of their community. This is, as we've already reported, the bridge repair is not an overnight deal, Commissioner. It will be quite some time and I do mean quite some time. Here's the thing, we are not interested in putting a patch.
Absolutely.
We're not interested in just doing patchwork, but we're interested in replacing that bridge with a, 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 a repair and replacement that will take us well beyond fifty into a hundred years instead of simply doing patchwork, just like we did out on Good Road. Instead of us just giving a temporary patch or solution, we took our time and got the necessary equipment and material that would take Rockdale County far beyond twenty, thirty, fifty years in terms of that roadway there on Rockbridge Road at Lake Capri. So I, I want to say to all of the residents, your safety is our number one concern. Please be patient with us. We acknowledge this is an inconvenience. We didn't know that this was going to happen like this, but our crews are working feverishly around the clock to expedite this project as, as, as expeditiously as they possibly can. But we've been told upfront, this will not be a three-month project. This will not be a six-month project because we're looking for a permanent fix that would take Rockdale County far beyond the base of, of any of us sitting here in this audience so that we can give the citizens what they do deserve and we not have to revisit this for quite some time, many years beyond the fifty-year mark. So I wanted to point that out. Commissioner Washington, I think you wanted to.
Yes, sir. Somebody mentioned in one of the comments that we have the highest budget that we've ever had in Rockdale County. And I want to say that this board taking the opportunity to address severe safety issues such like this in a way that is substantial and not just patching up something and making it something that is, something that is temporary and putting people at more, at a, at a higher risk of danger is one of the reasons why it, it costs more money to do things the correct way. And the fact that our Transportation Director just came up here and said that one of the safety measures on that approach wasn't adhered to means that whoever did this, they cut corners in the budget and now we have to go through and fix it and make it right so that we can have our citizens and whoever else is in this county on a safe and secure roadway and that costs more money. And we are, I know Post One and I'm, I'm sure, I am sure I speak for the other two commit, commissioners is committed to the safety of, of, of the citizens in this county.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes, I was just going to say it's the old adage of pay now or pay later. And paying later usually costs a whole lot more than paying now and doing it right the first time.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. I'm going to, I have a few brief comments here this morning as we prepare to wrap up. I do want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams regarding the decision and the unanimous vote on the minutes rate this morning at our earlier meeting. Thank you for listening to the citizens of Rockdale County. As stated, we have so many people who are on a fixed income, living paycheck to paycheck. No one knows when the end date will come to COVID nineteen and the coronavirus. It has really put us in a place that no one has ever seen. As I've stated so many times before, there wasn't a page forty-six for us to turn to and figure out what to do. We've been figuring that out as we've been moving and navigating through this pandemic. I also want to take an opportunity to say to all of our citizens as very strongly stressed by Commissioner Williams, it is imperative that you continue to practice social distancing, that you wear your face mask when you're out in the public, wash your hands, sanitize. We are not out of the woods. And with this upcoming flu season, it will compound the fact that COVID nineteen is still in existence. So we don't want to have a, a major setback in our community. To me, one death is one death too many. And many of us have people that we know in the workplace, in the community, in our families, our friends who have been impacted by COVID nineteen and the coronavirus one way or the other. This is also, at this point, we've been in this pandemic now since the middle of March and ever so more than this phrase, common sense. This is a lot, this has a lot to do with common sense and folks just using basic common sense to be smart and to be careful and to be safe. So we can't over emphasize that. Again, I want to give hats off to Chief Dan Morgan and our Emergency Management Department who has done a fantastic job in navigating us through this along with public relations, keeping the general population here in Rockdale County abreast as often as we can about what's going on and the status of the confirmed cases of COVID nineteen as well as the number of deaths that are here in our community. I also want to take an opportunity to say thank you to our local clergy. Several of our local clergy and faith-based entities have really gone above and beyond in terms of making sure that they practice safe and social distancing in terms of their worship services, whether it's a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday night Bible study that is online or there's a Sunday morning service that's now been held online. And I've talked to several of the local clergy and many of them have said that even when the pandemic is over with, that they will continue to have online services and worship services because that has proven to be a new medium for a lot of their parishioners and members of the congregation in terms of worshiping with their various churches. But we certainly do appreciate them partnering with, partnering with us in the fight against COVID nineteen and the coronavirus. I also want to take a moment and say, shine the spotlight in a very positive way. Commissioner Washington made, mentioned this earlier about the NEFCARE project and the inmate medical contract with the Sheriff's Office. I had an opportunity a few weeks ago to talk directly with Sheriff Levitt and I must say that he was very passionate and very adamant about making certain that the Sheriff's Office and the inmate population over the Rockdale County Jail have the best premium medical care going forward. And to the sentiments and comments made by Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams about listening to the community and understanding the critical need to make sure that we have the most premium health care for those persons who are incarcerated and under the care and the security watch of our sheriff personnel. I'm going to take this opportunity to commend Sheriff Levitt and his team for doing fine, fine and a fantastic job with making sure that the most premium type of care is being provided and most importantly, that they are hearing from the community. And I'm sure that we will be getting an update from the Sheriff's Office in the days ahead, ahead of many of the projects that they're working on. In closing, I want to say again, thank you to all of the Rockdale County employees who came out this morning to talk about the learning center that was proposed. And I want to just go ahead and take, because I believe that straightforward leadership includes straightforward ownership. I am the chairman of Rockdale County and I take complete ownership of the fact that we of the fact that we created a very outside the box ideal and concept through our talent management office to provide a benefit for the employees of Rockdale County. I'm not interested in entering into any kind of public debate or argument with my colleagues. I do believe that they have the true and right intentions of doing the right thing, not only on behalf of the citizens of the county, but on behalf of our employees. I will tell you that this is a great inconvenience because the employees did not come to us. We actually went to them. We had enough time, if there was any concern, to back up, pump the brakes and assemble ourselves with our staff. Now let me just tell you, part of ownership says that there has been, and I want to acknowledge that there has been a breakdown somewhere in communication. Believe you me that I am addressing that issue. I do understand that there was no contract solidified and that there was still negotiations moving forward as we were trying to expedite this program, knowing that school was opening up on yesterday, not just for the residents and those employees that live in Rockdale County, but those who live throughout the metro county area here in metropolitan Atlanta. At the end of the day, pure and right intentions were made on behalf of our employees, never to neglect small businesses and none of the taxpaying citizens here in Rockdale County. And to Commissioner Washington's point, she's absolutely correct. Although the funding would source would have been the CARES Act funding, which is federal dollars and part of what the President has extended out to states and counties and municipalities all across the country, we were going to take advantage of utilizing those funds to provide an opportunity to keep our workforce productive, relieve stress and to give them an educational outlet that would have consisted of several educators and not just one educator for fifty-six or fifty-seven children. Again, this is not an opportunity for us to debate this in a public arena. This is an opportunity for us to look at the contingency plan that has been proposed by Commissioner Washington and supported by Commissioner Williams. I am eager to see the contingency plan so that we can roll it out and make sure that we benefit all of those who stand in need of this opportunity. This is the most craziest, the most emotional roller coaster time that any of us have ever seen in our country. Things and people are super sensitive like they've never been before. And we were in a attempt to do something good to keep the workforce active and productive here in Rockdale County. I will say to both my colleagues, Commissioner Washington and to Commissioner Williams, we still have time, ample amount of time, to review the contingency plan that has been presented and to be able to roll out and provide an opportunity for all of those who stand in need where families across this great county, which includes our employees, are in a very tough time, some might describe as a frenzy or tizzy right now, trying to determine what they're going to do. I would like to rest upon the fact that we're going to move forward in the right spirit of every employee, in the right spirit of dispersing the funds that's been awarded to Rockdale County through the Federal CARES Act program. You can rest assured that as we move forward, the right decisions will be made. I'm also, as a leader, going to take this opportunity to say to those who've been impacted and affected, we apologize. I'm sorry that things are going in a different direction, but I would ask that you be patient as we regroup. I'm confident in our staff and I'm confident in the Department of Finance and its leadership to follow our procurement policies and procedures as set forth by this county moving forward. I know that we want to do the right thing on behalf of all of the taxpayers here in Rockdale County. And many of our employees are taxpaying citizens in this community, one way or the other. Again, this is an opportunity to provide a benefit. And there's still ample enough time to correct any errors or any miscommunication going forward on behalf of the children here in Rockdale County and our employees.